All the meeting of the Shreveport City Council now to order. We will recognize Councilman Willie Bradford to give us the invocation. And Councilman Mike Corbin will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Will you please stand?
Let us pray. This is Father, we come today to thanksgiving in our hearts. We're thankful, Lord, for you allowing us to see another day. To allow us, the leaders of this city, to come together to transact the business of this city. We thank you for your grace and we thank you for your mercy. We pray, Lord, that you would be with us in this meeting and direct our minds and our hearts to do the things that are pleasing in your sight, but also the benefit of the citizens of this city. Thank you for our mayor. We thank you for all of the servants that protect up the governance of this city. Be with us, we pray. It is in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam clerk, will you please now call the votes?
Councilman Bradford.
Present.
Councilman Everson.
Here.
Councilman Jenkins.
Present.
Councilman Corbin.
Present.
Councilman O'Gorman.
Present.
Councilman Ford.
Here. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the men's faith conference?
Second.
Second.
Who is the motion by?
Corbin.
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 Jim.
Madam clerk, do you get that?
Yes, thank you.
It's time I'd like to recognize Councilman Willie Bradford.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you. Thank you for this opportunity as my special guest. I would like to-
Councilman Bradford, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you take your vote on approval of the minutes?
Oh, can you take the vote?
Aye. Do you mind taking the vote?
I'm waiting for you.
Add that vote if you pass.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney, for keeping us on track. But, Mr. Chairman, I was about to introduce my guest that I had invited to be with us today. I had an opportunity to visit with her last week and it was a very informative meeting. And I wanted to continue the discussion for a little while by coming here today and sharing with society some of the things that we discussed in our meeting. So, I would like to present, actually to come up, the illustrious COO of the United Way of Northwest Louisiana, Ms. Lynn Stevens. Any of you? There she is.
How you doing, guys? Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Bradford, Ollie, everybody else here today, even you in the audience. I am Lynn Stevens. I'm the chief operating officer at United Way. And I've brought with me actually many members of my board of directors, Dr. Jerome Cox, Dr. Bruce Wilson, Larry Clark, Joe Kane, Don Olson. So, there's- I brought my posse, how's that? But I'd like to bring, just really come and give you a briefing of some of the big things we've been working on at United Way and how that can kind of hopefully help the city of Shreveport, because I think that's an important piece. As many of you know, United Way's been around for a lot of years, almost 100, almost facing our 100th anniversary. And over the years, we've definitely transformed and we're not just a fundraising organization anymore. We actually are tackling some of those big issue items, a lot of trying to help the individuals that live in each of your districts. With that being said, we also are taking on quite a few programs ourselves, things we've found that are missing pieces in our community. And so, we're using a report that actually each of you probably just received called the Alice Report. And we first launched this last year with a very in-depth, and this is actually the updated version, so every year we do an update for you all. And so, today I want to just talk a little bit about that and how we see that that can help our community. So, just so you know, a little background of why we did this, it's actually there are 11 United Ways in the state of Louisiana and together collectively, we went together to have this report done. And this report is actually all public record documents, but it's in one report. So, you don't have to go use Google. I mean, it's right there, a complete document that you can use. And we used Rutgers University so to gather all the data together. So, we brought in professionals to really help us do this. And so, the ALICE is actually an acronym. It stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained but Employed. And so, what we call that is the working hard, not the working poor that a lot of people may say that is. We call them the working hard, though. It really represents the number of people that you and I both know live in our community and in our district. It's individuals and families both. And what we find is the threshold that they live in is just basically living paycheck to paycheck. And I think that's an important piece that we sometimes forget in our crazy busy lives that we do. It does represent all ages and all genders and the young, the old, every race, everything that lives in our community. And so, sometimes we always think it's one sector or another, but it's really not. So, in Louisiana, this latest report showed there are actually 723,000 lives struggling paycheck to paycheck. And what does that look like in our community? It's actually 42% is in Caddo Parish, and this is just Caddo Parish. And in your packet, in the white packet on the right-hand side, I actually broke it down even further. So, you actually have a report in there that looks at the top 12 cities in the state of Louisiana, and Shreveport ranking is in there. And ranking right now, Shreveport actually went down, meaning we got worse. So, we're at 49%. That means 49% of our people that live in the city of Shreveport are struggling, living paycheck to paycheck. So, these are what I call the hard workers. It's people you and I both know. They're all taxpayers. They're unable to save. They're forced to make very short-term crisis, usually, decisions. They're landscapers. They're childcare workers. They could be somebody that you had lunch today and was served right across the table from. Cashiers. Food technicians. Bank tellers. And I can go on and on and on. What we know is these are the people that are accessing most of our services and the services of our nonprofit agencies in this community. So, for a two-parent family, what I want you to remember, two parents doesn't mean they're married, but two parents having two children, it takes $46,000 just to survive. Think about that. That's much higher than the federal poverty rate. But would you and I want to really live on that? And could we afford to live on that? It makes them make decisions that we don't want to think about, where they live, where they put their kids in school, childcare issues. Those are the- all those things that we like to think about at United Way. Let me just tell you a little bit of interesting facts about what the report says. It's 52% of our jobs here in Northwest Louisiana make less than $15 an hour. Cashiers are our number-one job in our community, 872 an hour. That's- think about it, 872. Nearly one-third of our seniors in Northwest Louisiana are struggling. We know that. But interestingly enough, so are what I call children, because I have one, two actually, under the age of 25. They struggle just as much. 13.9% of the people are unbanked. Why is that important? Well, if you are unbanked, you may not get paid today because everything is going to direct deposit. Or where are you getting your check cashed at? Childcare is our number-one expense that most parents have to think about. It's not rent. We always thought it was rent, right? But it's actually childcare. And quality childcare, if you want quality childcare, usually costs a lot more. So, what are we doing with this report? Well, first and foremost, we're bringing it to as many people that we can. I always tell people, I wish I could put this report on every copy table in our community so people could really read it, learn it, understand it, and really grasp the gravity that we're in. We really believe that some of these issues that are highlighted in the thing are contributing to our community issues that we see and read every day in the paper. We also know it's increasing the demand on our nonprofit sectors, meaning we're getting more and more requests for more and more money, and we can't provide all the services we So, the one reason I think we really undertook the project was really to use it as a tool, a tool that help us, that will be able to help us look at all these issues annually, because the issues do change day to day. It depends on what's going on in our community, whether oil is up or down, whether the casino business is booming or not. Those issues change and it changes a lot of decisions for families. We also wanted to give a voice to people that may not come before you. These are the people that are probably some of them sitting behind me in the audience today, who never get to sit before you and really tell you some of their problems. They're the people that call our office and probably every public line there is needing help. We wanted to use this data also to help us make funding decisions. We thought that was critical. With more and more requests coming before us, we wanted to know how we could help Alice families better in our community, how to make our community stronger, wiser. So, internally, what we've done is we've changed not only becoming a funder organization but taking on some of those tasks, like I said, some services that we weren't, we knew we were missing. We launched a program called Dolly Parton's Imagination Library and three very high-poverty zip codes in Shreveport. We also have it in DeSoto, Red River, Bossier, Natchitoches Parish as well. But we launched it first in Shreveport and it's to get one free book to every child under the age of five that lives in that zip code. Why? You might think that's a big task. Well, what we know is people living in poverty don't have access to the quality books. And we know without books, there is no family time, there is no reading opportunities for those families. We wanted to make sure they had a very good head start without having head start and have a chance to succeed when they got to kindergarten. Of course, we teamed up with the city of Shreveport to launch the Bank On program. It was underneath your guys' umbrella that we learned and we grew the program, and now it's Bank On Northwest Louisiana. Last year alone, 1,000 bank accounts were opened. Think about that, 1,000 people got help, got out of the payday loan hopefully placed, got out of going to the Walmart and paying two or three bucks, because two and three bucks adds up if you're doing it every week. We launched Family Wise, which is a prescription assistance program, whether you have insurance or not. Where hopefully you're using the card, which is free and downloadable, and you can take that to your pharmacy. And again, 40% on average savings for prescriptions. During tax time, we helped coordinate the voluntary income tax assistance program where anybody under the age of, or anyone earning under $54,000 can get their taxes done for free, federal and state, no strings attached. Think about that, 54,000 and under. We only did 2,800. And I say we only because think about the potential of how many more we could have done. We also use the platform called My Free Taxes. Some people don't trust. They want to do it all technology now. It's again, it's an H&R Block software program where you can do it for free, sitting in your own backyard, by the pool, wherever you want to do. That threshold's 64,000, so it's even higher for that. We found that that was really at LSU's centenary, we had great success getting students to do that platform. And what I'm really excited, the most excited about, that we really are taking on, and it's been a big step for us, probably a two-year step, is later this year, we are going to be bringing back 211. And if you don't know what 211 is, I'm here to tell you, it's a helpline that we lost in this community four years ago. And it's not the same helpline that we're bringing back. It's, I want to say new and improved, but it really is the same old helpline, but now technology has changed. What I can tell you, in the four years that we haven't had 211 in our community, 100,000 people tried to call 211 to get help and got nothing. Think about that. My mama died. I need help burying her. I need a hearing aid. Where can I get childcare assistance applications? You name it, they call for just about everything. They also call around this, you know, now without that, they're calling the United Way office, the community foundation, probably the city offices, 911. What we're trying to do is get them the one-stop-shop convenient. And when I say convenient, now we have the texting capability that will go along with it. So, again, it's going to be an amazing thing that we're bringing back. So, this year, what you have before you in your packet, with all of our internal programs and the grants, we're funding 77 programs to help Alice families. $1.1 million is what we're investing in our community. So, the dollars that we get donated, we turn that back and we keep that right here in our community. A lot of times, people don't think about what United Way does. We do a lot more than what I think a lot of people realize. And what I will tell you is the money raised here stays here. That's just a misnomer. I think that they all get shipped off to somebody who makes, you know, $900 million, 000. No, that's not true. What I can tell you is your money is going to be put to great use here in our community. So, you're probably sitting here going, well, what can we do? Well, here's what I want you to do. I want you to read the report. I want you to learn it. I want you to wrap your heads around it. You know most of what's going to be in there, but do your own research. I think that's important. Think about the people that you represent. Secondly, I'd like you to ask you to invite us to come do what we call a community conversation in each of your districts. We want to come. We want to hear the issues. We want to get this information out to those folks to be able to help them become more financially stable. Third, I really believe that this community is great. And I believe each of you sitting here do it for a reason, just like I do, wake up every day. You don't go into public office, right, for just for the paycheck, right? Well, you don't do that for working for a nonprofit. So, what I want you to do is really look at this information and really use it to fund the priorities that we really need in this community. So, as you're making policies and decisions, what I want you to remember is how are you helping Alice families? Whether it be affordable housing, transportation issues, fire and safety, it all plays a part for an Alice family. So, I just want to end by saying, we are here to help you, each of you. United Way's been around for a lot of years. We plan to be here for the next 100 years. And we are here to help you make this community great again.
I was really touched by some of the information that even went beyond what we discussed in your office. Thank you for coming down here. I just have a couple questions and some of the other councilmen may have some as well. We are at almost 50% of this community, including the poverty and the working poor. We are almost at 50% of those that are at risk of being in poverty, one paycheck away, you say. What fallout? What? Now, you're familiar with, there's several reports that are out there that predicted, projected that this may happen if we didn't do certain things. Are you familiar with the Mount Auburn, the Time to Choose report, or this Shreveport by Racial Committee report?
I am.
And there's something consistent within those reports that gave us some point of a caution or warning that it addressed the inequity or disparity within this city. These reports was back in the 80s.
Correct.
That they need to, this city should take on the responsibility of lifting up all segments of this community, especially African-American community. And that if that did not happen, certain results would become of that. Do you see a correlation between this degree of poverty or working poor and the crime that is occurring around here?
Well, what I will tell you, Mr. Bradford, is people make instant decisions when they're struggling. And they're thinking about survival. And so, they're not thinking about consequences. So, could that be contributing? Probably so. Because if you're hungry and you've got two babies at home and you got to feed them and you see a purse laying locked up in a car, that could be a choice that they make for the wrong reason, but for them, it's the right reason.
And I think the report, especially the Racial Commission report, spelled out more of some of the fallout of poverty than just crime. And you mentioned you wanted to sort of assimilate this around, who would you consider the stakeholders of this city that could play a role in altering these numbers as they are now?
Yeah, I think the business sector, the Committee of 100 would be a really good start. You know, they're the people who are helping us drive the bus in our community. They're the business leaders. I think there's 120 of them, even though their name is a Committee of 100. I think that would be a good start, getting the business community, the faith community. I think we have almost 1,000 churches, I think, in Caddo Parish. I think that would be a critical component that we need to address as well. I think those are two quick ones that I could come right off the hand.
In regards to the report in a more broader sense, how is education affected through poverty?
Well, if you're mama, you're a mama and you're working three jobs, how much time do you have for your children to read at night or help with homework? Or you're gone to work, where are the kids after school? Sometimes you don't know. We don't have enough quality childcare or after-school programs, I can tell you that. The ones we got, we've got some really good ones and we've got some that aren't so good. But those are the choices, again, that parents have to make, is whether to keep food on the table and pay the light bill and making sure that there's help and medical needs are addressed. So, some of those are, you're very true, education probably is hampered. It's not by choice. Everybody wants their kid to be better than themselves. Every mama believes that.
If we don't at least try to address this in a very aggressive way, what are we, if these statistics keep rising, what are we five years from now?
That's pretty scary. I mean, we're going the wrong way if we're looking from one year to the next, but the state in general went the wrong way as well. So, I think this is not just a Caddo Parish, city of Shreveport. I think this is a state issue. You know, sometimes we always kid, thank God for Mississippi, right? You've all heard that. We're not last in something or we're number two because of Mississippi. But I think it's pretty scary if you look at where we're going as a community. I think we have lost that community by then, that passion we all grew up with, I think, that we probably know our parents had. I don't want to say, call it patriotism, but in a way, we all knew our neighbors. Now, we drive home, we put the garage door open, we drive in, we shut the garage door and we go in through the house, and many of us don't even know our neighbors.
That ends my question, but thank you again for coming down.
You're very welcome.
I look forward to visiting with you again.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Councilman Everson?
Well, thank you, Lynn, for the presentation. You've been reading some of the information in here for a while and it's, you know, it's not a tremendous surprise to me. It's a harsh reality sometimes, but I think sometimes if you don't face your realities, you can't come up with the right solutions. And so, it's really helpful to have the information now, to have it in a printout like this that's easily referenced, that's even better. But one of the things I'd like to echo that you mentioned, the program that I saw firsthand just how quickly it helps some of my constituents.
Okay.
Is Bank On. I mean, fantastic program. It is tough for those of us who are accustomed to a traditional banking relationship to understand how much people who don't have access to traditional banks spend accessing their money. I mean, just to get the money that they're working hard for is costing them a great deal. And so, that program, for those who aren't familiar with it, I mean, I sing it to the hills everywhere I go because I think it's so beneficial. But it's a program that works with local banking institutions to help provide products for people who maybe don't have a credit history or maybe they had a bad, you know, they made a mistake at one point. It gives them a second chance to get back into a traditional banking system. And also provides some counseling and, you know, advice for how they can get used to using a traditional bank. And that is such a huge benefit that that makes, and it's kind of surprising. I mean, you wouldn't initially think, oh, that change would have such a big impact, but it does. Another one that, you know, and I don't know, there may be a program that addresses this or not, but it's certainly something that in working with a lot of my constituents, I was, you know, you sort of know to anticipate some problems, you sort of know some challenges that exist, but sometimes you're surprised by how impactful certain things can be on the people you represent. And one of the things that I've noticed, particularly as we have a lot of aging population, a lot of people may have their parents passing away or going into a nursing home or that kind of thing. Healthcare costs, I knew that's challenging for people. That was, you know, long-term care, I knew that was something. But one of the things that I didn't realize, how difficult it can be for somebody, particularly if their parent was a first-time homeowner and they didn't have generations of homeownership in their family, was what to do when their parent passes away, to file a secession, to make sure that that asset is transferred in a way that maintains its value? Because a lot of times, that can become a burden on those people who inherited something that should be an asset, that should be helpful to them. And instead, it becomes burdensome and overwhelming for them to maintain. And, you know, it causes a whole host of challenges for people. And so, really, thank you for bringing some of these issues to light.
You're welcome. And that's something I've been really passionate. My parents lived with me, have for about six years now, so I completely understand seniors. I'm the sandwich generation because I have kids on both sides, because my parents are just like two-year-olds. And facing some of those aging concerns and questions, I've learned a lot, that's for sure.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for this.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right.
Does any other council member need to be recognized this time? Mayor Tyler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir. Members of the council, I want to first, before I make my announcement, bring up Dr. Lonnie McCray. He was not able to be with us yesterday. He's another appointee that I have recommended to be reappointed for the Greater Shreveport Human Relations Commission. Dr. McCray is here today. Can you come up, Dr. McCray? Just kind of give your name and your address. Yesterday, we brought a number of appointees to the council. And of course, this one, of course, will be on the agenda two weeks from now for confirmation by the council. But he was unable to be here yesterday because he had another meeting with the regents, and so we're glad to have him here today. If there are any questions for Dr. Lonnie McCray, I want you to just give your name.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Lonnie McCray. Address is 8601 Millicent Way, Shreveport, Louisiana 71115.
Is this a new appointment, mayor, or-
It's a reappointment to the Greater Human Relations Commission, the same one that Mr. Prentice Smith is going to be reappointed to, but he was not able to be here yesterday, so.
Right, okay. And I just want to establish that.
Yes.
So, you were president of the commission?
Yes.
Give me your somewhat of view, overview of the work that has transpired over the last two years.
Well, we have, thank you, councilmembers, for allowing me to be here with you this morning and this afternoon, since Mayor Tyler, thank you for placing my name for reappointment. I actually stood before the council for several of you who were here a few years ago as a representative of the community to hope and ask you to pass the Shreveport Fairness Ordinance. And so, that is something that the council did. And so, immediately after that, I began working with Adrian Critcher and the other members of the team to develop the Human Relations Commission. We have worked on the bylaws and the guidelines and everything is now- We have worked on the bylaws and the guidelines and everything is now in place, our website is now in place, and so we are now ready to do the work that's set in the ordinance and set in our bylaws that we can hopefully accomplish.
And the makeup of the commission, does it reflect what you feel is comfortable with the demographic?
It does reflect a good demographic of the city of Shreveport, yes.
I know you guys, I was on the first Human Relations Commission that was established back in 92 by then Mayor Hazel Beard, I served there for 10 years, and we had a little different, our responsibilities and objectives was a little different than you have.
Right.
We kind of presented the diversity that we represented on the commission to the community. Is there opportunities that that would happen, besides your investigative issues and how you would rule over certain other issues? Is you, the commission, in your opinion, in a posture to present yourselves, not necessarily in these type of meetings, but in a community way to show?
That we're a diverse group of individuals.
And interests that?
In our interest, yeah. So we do hope to do more as the fairness ordinance, of course, to handle those issues as they arise. But we also want to be sure that we participate and even develop programs such as, and participate in programs like that was on Race, I believe, that was Goodwill Community a year ago. So those types of things, those are the types of things that we want to start holding as a group and make those available to the community.
Dr. McCray, thank you, and I commend your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
If I could also, I want to thank you for your service, Lonnie, and, you know, it is just great to see, again, the mayor reappointing some of the members who have done a lot to get this organization to the point that sometimes it's hard to set up an organization that's somewhat new in its focus, you know? And so I know there were a lot of details, but we really appreciate the work that y'all put into, and I appreciate your willingness to continue to serve.
Thank you.
And while he may be a District D constituent, his father is very much a District B constituent, so.
Yes, okay. Okay, thank you all, thank you.
All right, thank you, members of the council. Our announcements for today are, I want to say to the council today that this morning, I was invited to attend a press conference, and some of you may have seen some of it already in the media, announcing a federal grand jury indictment against nine people from Shreveport involved in a racketeering operation here in our city. And those were some of the most violent offenders. Of course, we've been working with the U.S. Attorney's Office for more than a year, and we tried to say to council members and to the community that, of course, we've been working with all law enforcement agencies, and today, they were able to make that announcement publicly about what has been going on. And I'm proud to say that the Shreveport Police Department led that effort with the U.S. Attorney's Office. U.S. Acting Attorney Alex Van Hook actually called the press conference and invited me to come over there this morning, so I went over, because he and I had been talking about what was happening in our city. And of course, we were joined this morning by several other agencies, the Sheriff's Department, we had the Boja Parish Sheriff Department there, Boja Parish Sheriff Whittington, Sheriff Steve Prater, a lot of other law enforcement agencies actually joined us. And I think the important thing that I wanted to say this afternoon was, as I said to one of the telecommunications this morning, a message was sent to those in our community who were committing the violent crimes, that those crimes will no longer be tolerated. That was one operation. We have others going, ongoing, that, of course, certainly they cannot speak about. But there is the collaboration between all law enforcement agencies in this area to bring people to justice, and I need our community to know that if you know what's going on in your individual neighborhoods, speak up. And that's one of the messages that we've been trying to get out. But today, they were able to make the announcement because just last week, they were able to kind of bring that operations to a close and arrest some of the most violent people in our city. So we want to say thank you to SPD for leading that effort and to all of those law enforcement agencies, and I want to do that publicly. Mr. Van Hook and I have talked several times about things that they were doing that he could not discuss publicly at that time until he could bring some of these people, you know, to bring some charges against them. Indictments will come, but it is important for our community to know that we're working every single day, people are putting their lives on the line every day to keep us safe, and this crime is going to be brought under control because we are working together and have been doing that. The next announcement, I'd like to make everyone aware that today, Restore Louisiana will be hosting an outreach event at the Shreve Memorial Library at the Atkins Branch from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. tonight to assist as many homeowners as possible affected by the August 2016 flood. They will provide one-on-one assistance with completing the initial homeowner survey. Those unable to attend today can call, and I'll give you this number twice, 866-735-2001, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. That number again is 866-735-2001. And we're asking all those people who were affected, those homeowners, please, please do the survey because there may be funding available to help our citizens who need that help. Next, I want to remind the council and our publics of the ribbon-cutting ceremony for a new dog park this week. There has been a slight change in the time. The event will begin at 5:30 p.m. Friday instead of 5:00 p.m. 5:30 p.m. is when we will begin that ribbon-cutting. We'd like to see each of you out there, if your schedules will allow. Also this weekend, we will have a Red River Balloon Rally and U.S. Hot Air Balloon Championship again in our city at LSUS, and I want to thank Dr. Larry Clark, who's chancellor at LSUS, I think he's here today. Thank you, Dr. Clark, for hosting again this year. It was a wonderful success last year, and we are expecting another great event this year. Some of you may have already seen a lot of the beautiful balloons in the sky, and so they're practicing this week, but we'll have all the competitions starting Friday through the weekend. So please come out and enjoy the food fun and just fellowship. So if you get a chance, go out and see the balloons compete again, starting this weekend. I'm excited to inform the council and our publics that our very own Shreveport Regional Airport celebrated its 65th anniversary of service to our region just last week. Several elected officials and distinguished members of our local community came out to hear some history about our airport and to learn about the future of local air travel, namely the largely anticipated direct flights to Charlotte, North Carolina, starting in August. The Shreveport Regional Airport is commemorating this event by sponsoring a sweepstakes to win round-trip tickets to Charlotte. And more information is online at flashreport.com. So please go online and buy a ticket, and you may even win a round-trip ticket. There are eight, I think, that are being given away, and so we are pushing that one so that we can have very, a great success with the new flight, the red flight to Charlotte. Yesterday, we participated in a press conference to promote the ParkMobile Parking App. Visitors to downtown can use their smartphones to take care of parking transactions. This week, the Downtown Development Authority launched its 20 Days of Winners campaign where app users will have a chance to win $25 of free parking downtown, and that's for 20 days that you can win that $25. So that parking app has been used by hundreds of people already, and is already showing great success. I want to thank those councilmembers who were able to join us last week as we celebrate the ribbon-cutting of the newly renovated Cardyale Park. This past weekend, the 40th Annual Sickle Cell Softball Tournament was held there at the beautiful facilities. Mrs. Shelley Regal Wood and SPAR, which is our department that does such an excellent job in updating and renovating our wonderful buildings and assets here in Shreveport. There were approximately 110 teams participating in that tournament, even between the rain, they still were able to compete. So we want to thank everybody who went out to support that effort. I will also recognize our SPAR Department, Traffic Engineering, Shreveport Police Department, Shreveport Fire Department for their help in putting on the KTBS Independence Day Festival with, of course, KTBS as the big partner there on the Fourth of July. We had great turnout and a wonderful holiday celebrating our nation. Last week, I also had the honor of being invited to and attending two prayer vigils on behalf of our city. I was glad to see many city leaders there, as well as proactive members of our community taking a stand to pray for our city and for our region. Also with us today are the 2017 Mayor's Summer Interns. These students have shown academic success and skill in their respective fields of study and have chosen to spend their summer working in our various city departments. At this time, we're going to ask someone, one of them, to come up. They have a presentation that they'd like to make, and we're excited to have them with us, all the interns. Will you please stand up for just a minute? This is an outstanding group of young people who are college students. Thank you so much. Okay, it's up to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for this chance to address the council and the opportunity to witness the operations of Shreveport in such an up-close and personal way. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the council. Thank you for your time. My name is Anna Howell, and I am the current Public Relations and Communications Intern for the mayor's office. We interns would like to thank you all, not only for the opportunity to speak to you today, but for the honor to observe and learn from the knowledgeable and skilled workers of our great city. After going through a competitive selection process, we were placed in various departments by our fabulous intern coordinator, Ms. Tari Bradford, who works tirelessly to make Shreveport a better place. Throughout this program, she has instilled qualities such as professionalism and determination in each of us. Individually, we have gotten to learn from the people who work in scientific labs, judge court cases, work on budgets, work crime scenes, write press releases, and more. As a group, we have taken a tour of six city departments for a unique behind-the-scenes perspective, and this Saturday, July 15th, we will volunteer at the Shreveport Rescue Mission for our class service project. The purpose of this internship is for college students to network, gain a clear understanding of how our city government operates, and lay the groundwork to live here and run the city ourselves one day. As a two-time intern here, I can say that I have encountered countless hard-working and influential people, greatly increased my knowledge of how a municipality is run, and gained unparalleled admiration and respect for the place that I call home. This program has not only shaped our summer, but our future. We thank you for your time, example, and support of our mayor, who has taken the time to believe in us and the future of Shreveport. Now, Ashley Harris, the intern for the Shreveport Regional Airport, will introduce the rest of the interns. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Next to me is Anna Howell. She goes to LSU in Baton Rouge, where she majors in communication, and she is working in the Communication Department in the mayor's office. I'm Ashley Harris. I also go to LSU in Baton Rouge. I'm an accounting major, and I work at the regional airport. Brianna Chambers goes to LSUS, where she is a criminal justice major, and she is working with the fire department. Jordan Dixon goes to Northwestern State University, where she is majoring in school counseling for her master's, and she is working in the Risk and Management Department. David Hadden goes to LSU in Baton Rouge, where he majors in political science, and he's in the City Attorney's Office. Haley Hesterman goes to ULL, where she majors in mathematics, and she works for the city courts under Judge Barber. Kiana Jackson goes to ULL, where she majors in biology, and she's working in the Water and Sewage Department. Miles Lester goes to Southern University in Baton Rouge, where he majors in management with a concentration in HR, and he is working with community development. Kendall Mangum goes to LSU in Baton Rouge, where she majors in political science, and she is also working in the city courts under Judge Barber. Jasmine McConnell recently graduated from Northwestern State University with a degree in accounting, and she's working in the Accounting and Finance Department. Kayla McVeigh goes to Tugulu, where she majors in communications, and she's working for Sportran. Bazad Monizari recently got his master's from Western Kentucky in engineering and technology, and he works in the engineering department. Tracy Pardue goes to LSU, goes to Louisiana Tech, and she majors in management with a concentration with in HR, and she works in the HR department. Destiny Smith goes to ULL, where she majors in communication, and she's working for SPD. Erica Thomas goes to Grambling. She's majoring in child development, and she's at SPAR. Brianna Thomas goes to Northwestern State University, where she majors in electronic engineering technology, and she's in the Water and Sewage Department. Summer Williams goes to Jackson State, where she majors in biology, and she's in the city court under Judge Pam Littier. And last but not least, Robert York goes to Louisiana Tech, where he majors in psychology, and he works with the city council.
Okay. Thank you. You all may be seated. Thank you so much, members of the council, for allowing those young people to be identified today. It was, as Emma said, the competition was tough. We had a number of people who did apply, and we wish we could have had them all, but we have a great group, and as I spoke with them earlier today, they have Shreveport at heart, and so they want to finish their dreams and their goals and come back to Shreveport and make it a great place, continue to make it a great place to call home. We continue to serve our citizens with numerous events, and of course, I'll list just a few of those, and I think I've already told you most of them. But the KTBS, KPSJ's Fourth of July Festival at Riverview Park was fabulous this year. It didn't get rained out. Movies and Moon Beams featuring Capture the Flag at Riverview Park, Cardyale Parks Complex, ribbon-cutting at Cardyale, Sickle Cell Softball Tournament at Cardyale in Southern Hills, and Farmers Market at Festival Plaza are just a few of the things that we have been doing over the past couple of weeks since we last met, but the list goes on and on and on. Again, thank you for allowing us to make those announcements, and that is the end of the announcements. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. Was there more guests that came in?
I do know who that other group was, and I don't know if we, another group came in that I noticed I had the chance, along with William Bradford and Karen Strannan this morning, of addressing the leadership class for the Chamber of Commerce that they're currently having. Does that group want to stand real quick so we can recognize you? We appreciate you all being here with us today. Thank you. They just came in. I think they were a surprise addition, but while I'm talking, can I just say what a great group of interns? That was awesome, and congratulations to you all. I have to say, after several years of doing this, that might be the closest alignment of what people are studying to what roles they were doing here that I've heard in a while. That was good.
We tried to do that.
It was evident.
Okay, thank you.
Any other councilmember we recognize? Before we leave the reports, anybody have any additional to what we had yesterday on Then that brings us to Resolution 110, public hearing, not to be adopted prior to today. And that public hearing is called to order on Resolution 110 of 2017. The public is, the hearing is on Resolution 110 stating the city of Shreveport endorsement of Market Street, Shreveport LLC to participate in the benefits of the Louisiana Restoration Tax Abatement Program and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. Does the administration have a presentation?
Well, Mr. Lewis from our Community Development Department is here. If we need, are you going to present today, or do you just want to ask questions, answer questions, Mr. Lewis?
I have a short video presentation on the, on the project.
On the project, okay. Is that okay?
Yes, sure.
Okay, Mr. Lewis, please proceed.
For the record, this is a restoration tax abatement application by Market Street, Shreveport LLC. The location is 509 Market Street. Before the Shreveport City Council today is the public hearing and approval of a resolution stating the city's endorsement of Market stating the city's endorsement of Market Street, Shreveport LLC to participate in the benefits of the Louisiana Restoration Tax Abatement Program. The Restoration Tax Abatement Program of the state of Louisiana, created by Act four forty-five of nineteen eighty-three and codified in Louisiana Revised Statute Forty-seven, Section forty-three eleven through forty-three nineteen, authorized the Board of Commerce and Industry with approval of the governor and local governing authority to grant property owners who propose the expansion, restoration, improvement, or development of an existing structure in a downtown development district, historic district, or economic development district, the right to pay ad valorem taxes based on the valuation of the property prior to the commencement of the expansion, restoration, improvement, or development. The structure subject to restoration is the old Commercial Bank Building located at five zero nine Market Street, downtown Shreveport. Built in nineteen eleven, the building has been a part of Shreveport's skyline and has served Shreveport well, but had become vacant and dark. The building is located in Shreveport's Downtown Development District. It is also listed on the National Register of Historic Places for its statewide significance in architecture, commerce, and politics slash government. This project will fully renovate and restore the seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-four feet vacant building and convert it to a mixed-use residential office and retail development. There will be seventy-three apartments on floors two through ten, along with three thousand seven hundred and forty square feet of office space on the mezzanine level, and fifteen thousand square feet of retail space on the ground floor. The basement will be renovated into a storage and safety deposit box facility. The total cost of this project is ten million five hundred and eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. The cost of the rebated taxes for the city is forty thousand five hundred and one dollars per year for five years totaling two hundred and two thousand five hundred and five dollars. The rebate can be extended up to an additional five-year period upon approval of the City Council. As a result of the Market Street, Shreveport LLC's renovation of the vacant building, four new jobs will be created here in Shreveport with a total annual payroll of five hundred and forty thousand dollars. It is, it is estimated by the applicant that an additional twenty to thirty jobs will be created by retail tenants that will occupy the building. Also, seventy-five construction jobs with a payroll of six hundred and thirty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars will be created for the renovation project. Thanks to the Shreveport City Council for its consideration of an endorsement resolution supporting Market Street, Shreveport LLC's Restoration Tax Abatement Application.
I'll certainly say, just, um, as the council member for that, uh, district, you know, we've had a number of Restoration Tax Abatements over there, um, and they have served to, uh, really encourage some, some strong redevelopment. Uh, this is a great candidate for one. Uh, this is a candidate that, um, is gonna provide something that's in demand in our downtown, something that we need more of, and, uh, it's gonna take some space that's otherwise been, um, somewhat underutilized for, for a number of years, and, uh, turn it into, um, something that is in demand at the moment. So, um, this is a group that's investing, uh, a good deal of money, and I did have a chance to look at some of their projects that they've done in other communities. They appear to do a high-quality project, and, um, so, uh, I appreciate the presentation and I certainly support it.
Thank you.
Quick question. Do you already, do, do they already have identified tenants for the retail space or specific type of retail that they're targeting?
I think there was, uh, for the basement area, they, they're creating a storage and, uh, uh, safe deposit box area. I think they may have a tenant for that, but they didn't provide any listed tenants for the other retail space.
And the, out of curiosity, those are pretty good figures for four jobs. So what are those four jobs that you'd have?
They're in the management of the facility.
Management of the facility.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
In regards to, uh, time, timeframes, I hope, do you have an idea of what, what type of frames we are as relates to construction, soliciting tenants, operations?
Well, at this point, uh, I showed a short video of, of the building. There's work, there's very little work that's been done there, just more preparatory work. We don't have a date as to when they're, they're gonna finish the, uh, facility at this point in time.
But, uh, the, uh, the company, the LLC, they, 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 they seem to be pretty confident and strongly committed to, to making this work.
Yes, they are. They're excited about the opportunity. Uh, one of the gentlemen, and this is another issue, for his travel to the city of Shreveport. He wanted to come here today, but he felt that the cost was prohibitive for him to get here and get back to, he's in Atlanta, Georgia, and, uh, he mentioned something around the figure of seven hundred and something odd dollars. Uh, and he indicated that he's sorry he couldn't make it today, but, uh, he's fully invested and, uh, looking forward to moving forward with the project.
Any other council? Mr. Councilman Corbin? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there, is there any member at this time, uh, the public who wants to speak for this, uh, resolution? Seeing none, is there any against that would like to speak against the resolution? Seeing none, then this public hearing is now closed. Let's move to resolute, we, uh, an amendment, do we have to have someone to motion to?
That comes up later.
Later. We're gonna do it now or we're gonna wait?
We're gonna wait.
Okay. Adding legislation to the agenda, public comments and confirmation of form of sentence. Mr. Thompson?
Uh, there is no legislation to be added to the agenda.
Can you request to speak items on the agenda?
Yeah, we fix it.
Oh, you got that?
Recognize vice chairman at this time to those that want to speak on the agenda. Items.
Hey, uh, Mr. Sammy Mears to speak on number one twenty-four. State the name and address of the record, please.
Sammy Mears, nineteen oh one Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven one one oh one. I do come today with a very concerned matter that I would like to talk about today. I really feel that a donation would be very nice to give to the Shreveport Police Department for the hard work that they do every day of their lives for all of us. The reason I bring this today is because I think a donation would really be a very wonderful and a super great thing that would help them out. They put their lives on the line for us every day, like Mayor Ali Tyler said earlier, and they do a very good job of it. They try to help those who need help, and the ones who just wanna be ridiculous, that's their own fault. After all, if you look at the situation, as Mayor Ali Tyler said earlier, nine people have been indicted, and I don't know what they did, but stupidity must be on the list. And I just wonder if stupid was written on their foreheads, because if it wasn't, it should be. Even one cop may even ask somebody if they have a kit, and they might say, "Who's that?" And the cop might say again, "Where's your kit?" And they might say, "I don't have a little boy." Dumb. And it would get so out of hand, he'd say, "Where is your kit?" Again, and then she might say, "Does the house have to fall on you?" Instant arrest. We're not gonna even tolerate that either. It's ridiculous. So I believe that in this case, it should be corrected. The Shreveport Police Department surplus and the property, they should really have the donation. Therefore, I'm in favor of it today. I hope you will be too, and I hope that you'll vote yes, because we can't have a lot of nonsense going on. And those who are just out there wanna be stupid, I have no problem with watching them get arrested, and even if I don't see them get arrested, it's their own fault. And Oliver, I was glad to see you at the Strong's Eat Shop.
Good to see you too, Sammy. That's all we have. Okay? You didn't just wanna know where to find it? Okay. Buying a pie, just so everybody knows I was buying a pie. Sure I'll buy it. So we're clear, that's what I was doing there. And I was. That's it.
Mr. Thompson, we have, uh, executive formers to be considered today.
Uh, we have several, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the, uh, the mayor has made several appointments to the Shreveport Implementation and Redevelopment Authority, uh, and they have to serve staggered terms. Uh, Ms. Christine Brown for a four-year term, Mr. Alfred Darnell Johnson, Jr. for a four-year term, Ms. Shanarika Fleming's Esquire for a three-year term, and Mr. Justin Sevier for a five-year term. Also, she's made an appointment to the Shreveport Airport Authority Board, Mr. Jonathan Reynolds for a five-year term.
Motion by Councilman Everston, second by, uh, who made the motion? By the way, Councilman Jenkins, of course, ever. Any discussion? Jenkins, motion. Please vote.
Just one comment, and we've all said it, but really excited to see that Implementation and Redevelopment Board get started.
Thank you.
So that is a, something desperately needed for those of us that have been this for six years, working on that. That is exciting, though.
Absolutely. Thank you. If I may, Mr. Chairman, I noticed that Bishop Lawrence Brandon has joined us this afternoon. Of course, he had to step down from the Shreveport, uh, Airport Authority because of his new appointee at the state level, but he's with us. If you will stand, Bishop Brandon, thank you so much for being here. He still continues to work in our community, and, uh, certainly, we appreciate all that he does.
Yes, and Bishop Brandon, uh, we have been praying for you, and your family and your mother, so we hope she's doing better. All right, there, no items under consent agenda production. Mr. Thompson, please continue.
Uh, we have one item under the consent agenda for adoption. It's Resolution One Twenty-three, a motion to adopt the consent agenda would be in order.
Motion by Councilman Everston, second by Councilman Jenkins. Any discussion? And that passes.
We're now to res- resolutions on second reading and final passage. The first is Resolution One Ten. It states the City of Shreveport's endorsement of Market Street, Shreveport LLC to participate in the benefits of Louisiana Restoration Tax Abatement Program.
Second. Okay, motion by Councilman Everston, second by Councilman Jenkins. Any discussion? Please vote. And that's the ballot.
Resolution One Twenty authorizes the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreed with the Ark-La-Tex Regional Air Service Alliance.
Motion by Councilman Everston, second by Councilman. Vote. Any discussion? Please vote. And that motion passes.
Resolution One Twenty-one authorizes the mayor to accept an interim donation of a gazebo and landscaping.
I have a motion by Councilman Everston, second by Councilman. Vote. Any discussion? Please.
Can I just say real quick how cool it is of this group, who has, um, been such a great partner to the city. Oakland Cemetery, for those who may not be familiar with, and this was our city's original park, um, and has street names on the sidewalks, uh, that were our original streets and, uh, you know, they're originally, uh, dedicated as streets. Um, and it just has so much history there that tells about the past and, and our community. And, um, so the Oakland Preservation Society has helped to, um, raise the funds, um, to build this, uh, really beautiful gazebo where people can enjoy the, uh, the Oakland Cemetery. And, um, you know, this is private funds coming in to, to a public space to really make it, um, uh, a lot better and to, uh, help give the, the public a place to appreciate, uh, this great space. So we're just really thankful to citizens that step up to do things like this and just...
I've never heard anybody give such a glowing report of a cemetery as you just did.
It's pretty. Go out there. It is very cool. But you work in the cemetery, Bill, so... It's just all bred in front of you, right? Okay.
Motion has been made, and please ready to vote. Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, we're now to introduction of resolutions. We have three, I believe. Resolution One Twenty-four authorizes a donation of the Shreveport Police Department's surplus properties, specifically retiring two horses at the end of their service career. Resolution One Twenty-five authorizes submission of the twenty seventeen Annual Action Plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Resolution One Twenty-six amends the peace schedule for the Emergency Medical Services Division of the Shreveport Fire Department.
Move for introduction. Second by Councilman Bradford, Councilman Corbin, which is second on that. Any discussion? And that passes.
Mr. Chairman, there are also three ordinances on the agenda to be introduced. Ordinance seventy-three amends the twenty seventeen Debt Service Fund Budget. Ordinance seventy-four amends the twenty seventeen Capital Improvements Budget. And Ordinance seventy-five, uh, ordinance amending the twenty seventeen Air Force Enterprise Fund Budget.
Motion to introduce these ordinances? Second. Any discussion? And that was passed.
We're now to ordinances on second reading and final passage. Ordinance sixty-seven authorizes the mayor to execute a lease of city-owned property to Long Star Coaches.
Motion by Councilman Everston, second by Councilman. Any discussion? Motion passes.
Ordinance number sixty-nine amends the twenty seventeen Capital Improvements Budget. This concerns water improvement projects.
Councilman Everston, motion? Second by Councilman. Vote. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes.
Ordinance number seventy amends the twenty seventeen General Fund Budget. Concerns the police department operations.
Second. Okay, motion by Councilman Bowden, second by Councilman Jenkins. Any discussion? Please vote. And stopped it.
Ordinance number seventy-one is a zoning matter, case number C dash fifty dash seventeen. It amends chapter one oh six of the code by rezoning property located on the south side of West Seventy.
Second. Okay, motion by Councilman Bowden, second by Councilman Everston. Any discussion? Matter approved.
Ordinance number seventy-two is a zoning matter, case number C dash seventy-five dash sixteen. It amends chapter one oh six of the code by rezoning property located on Lee's side of Monk House Drive.
Motion by Councilman Bowden, second by Councilman Everston. Any discussion? Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, those are all of the items on the regular agenda. I'm not aware of any matter on the table agenda that's to be removed from the table at this time.
Okay. That would bring us to property, uh, standard field. We have not.
All of the appeals have been decided. Uh, we're now to report from offices, boards, and committees.
Okay. Councilman Corbin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I will be sending out a notice, requesting a notice soon of an audit, Nance Committee meeting. I'll work with, uh, internal audit to find the right date, but we have a number of audits that we need to review and kind of get that backlog knocked down.
Okay.
And, and Mr.? I would be, I would be setting a meeting as well, uh, but I would, I would be given more information. It's my emergency business, ten force, meeting.
Okay. Any, understand? Uh, yeah. I'll just briefly add that we did have a Riverfront B four committee meeting yesterday, um, and during that meeting, we got an update on a number of, uh, projects along the Riverfront, um, and we also requested some information for our next meeting. And we also requested some information for our next meeting so that we can continue some of the discussions that were started there. We talked a little bit about, primarily about improvements along the riverfront, on the Red River. And then we did discuss a little bit of some of the downtown development, some other subjects like the new parking app and the Shreveport Common Project. So look forward to continuing those conversations in our next meeting. Thank you.
I begin with a question about the next part of the safety of the meeting also.
That brings us at this time to the clerk's report.
Mr. Chairman, we received from the mayor several appointments as follows. Dr. Lani McRae to the Greater Shreveport Human Relations Commission. This is a reappointment. Mr. Prentice Smith to the Greater Shreveport Human Relations Commission. It's also a reappointment. Ms. Lakeisha Russell Coleman to the Shreveport Implementation and Redevelopment Authority for a two-year term. M. Thomas Arseneau Esquire to the Shreveport Implementation and Redevelopment Authority for a five-year term. Mr. Lloyd Thompson to the Shreveport Implementation and Redevelopment Authority for a three-year term. Ms. Mary Jackson Esquire to the Shreveport Airport Authority, and it's also a reappointment. And Mrs. Margaret Sheehy Coe to the Shreveport Airport Authority, a reappointment. That's the clerk's report, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Bradford, did you have any questions concerning this clerk's report?
No, sir. I think the clerk made a very fine report in that we have seen and heard from these candidates for confirmation.
Thank you, sir.
We look forward to their confirmation in the next meeting.
I mean, it's been so long since you'd said something today. Apparently, he was worried that you were still alive over there. He's been really quiet.
The clerk thanks you, Mr. Chairman.
Additional communication? Since Councilman Jenkins was concerned about my presence, Mr. Chairman, I do have something I want to say.
Could you hold that just for a second? Let me count, they got the mayor here first.
Yes, sir.
I want to be sure and have good manners. So Mayor Tyler, it's your turn. Do you have any additional?
I have no additional, thank you.
Councilman Bradford?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I want to thank the city attorney for providing me with the information that I requested regarding the fair share statistics. While I had to do some cycling to get to some numbers that I was anticipating because my understanding is that the fair share coordinator did not compile the numbers statistically the way I requested. But I did peruse them, and I came up with something. And then I asked the mayor yesterday to tell me if she could, the participation of minority contractors on the Collier Park renovation project.
And we will get that for you. I asked Mrs. Regal Wood if she can pull that. I'm not sure she was able to get it for today, but we'll get it to you.
Well, ma'am, in addition to requesting that from you, I took the privilege of calling the minority contractors' executive director and asked him to poll his members to see if indeed any of them, now, there's not limiting it to any minority participation, but his response back to me was that no members of the Minority Contracts Association participated in the, in any of the contractual work for that $4.5 million project. Which leads me to say this. In 1968, I was 16 years old, and there was two events that was going on in Shreveport. One was, there was an attempt by the Shreveport NWCP to integrate the lunch counters at Woolworth. In 1968, African-Americans could not sit at the lunch counter eating hamburger. Concurrently, in 1968, there was a bar card of Stan's Record Shop where African-Americans purchased more music at Stan's Record Shop. There was no African-Americans that either worked there as stockmen or as salespeople. People got arrested for sitting in at the Woolworth department store. It took four months and two weeks for Stan Lewis, who was the owner of Stan Records, to concede that he would hire salesmen to sell records that African-Americans purchased. And receiving the information, Mayor, that when you held the river cutting, you were surrounded by various people, but then to find out that no minorities that could be reported to me participated. And the contracting and procurements of that work disturbed me. It's akin to what I just mentioned. It's one thing to buy a hamburger at Woolworth or buy a record at Stan Record Shop. It's another thing for African-Americans to participate in the economics of those projects. We are a city, and you heard the statistics from Lynn Stevens. We cannot continue to omit a sector of this city from participating in the mainstream procurements and contracting of this city. It's wrong. We got almost 50% of this city that are either on the borderline or in poverty. And we got, according to the fair share statistics, less than 8% of this city procurements, and according to MSI statistics, less than 1% of this city's, overall city's economic capacity, African-Americans participated in at a 1% percentile. $17.5 billion economy that Shreveport generates. Yet, we cannot find our way, the city nor business in Shreveport, to seek out and initiate programs and opportunities that the majority of this citizen, not citizen, but in that sense, but citizens who represent businesses, cannot participate. And we wonder why we're in this condition. We're going to have to challenge ourselves to find ways that we can create opportunities for participation of our citizens who are left out. I know there's no magic wand, but this city needs to set the example for the rest of the city entities, government, that we going to promote and encourage participation by everybody. 1% is unacceptable. Less than 8% is unacceptable. We cannot turn this around. We cannot turn this around by continuing in the same old vein. We got to take extra efforts to do this. And this council going to have to also understand, and you heard Lynn Stevens say that, that we have responsibility to help make this happen. We got to be aggressive, and we got to be progressive. Aggressive and progressive in coming up with ways that we can propose that will include more of our cities' residents and businesses in the procurements and contracting of this city. $400 million, consent decree work over the next eight years. We're two years into a $4 million, $10 million, a $4 million, 10-year project to upgrade our citizens' interest. There's been a lot of maneuvering related to engineering projects and some of the structural projects. I estimate that we spent of that $400 million, close to $100 million. Likewise, in polling, some of the minority contractors, they are getting crumbs. And estimated that out of that $100 million projected that has been spent, that they have only received at a maximum $100,000. That's 1%. When we have those type of opportunities to where everybody could participate and gain a degree of livelihood and wealth and not do that, that's not going to help this city in the long run. This council has an obligation to our people. 49% either poverty or working poor, and we have opportunities to help them, and we refuse to help them. It's not right. That's just unfair. And I was in a meeting last night, as I close. I had a meeting on the Cooper Road, MLK Community. And I was partially treated for something that I did not do. I was blamed for the condition of the Cooper Road. I had, I'd been on this council for two years and six months. I took the chairman, the council clerk, and another person on a tour of the Cooper Road, and we saw chronic poverty. We saw chronic disinvestment. We saw chronic housing dilapidation where people was actually living in. And they want to know, how come I hadn't done anything about it in two and a half years? Dilapidated streets. Why haven't my street been paved in two and a half years? Well, you know, my response to that is, you know, your street have fault money is over on Percy Wilson. But yet, the denial of helping that community, which was annexed to the city in 1977, and the city made commitments after commitments that we're going to upgrade this, we're going to upgrade that, we're going to upgrade this, and nothing tangible has happened. And they blame me. Now, 10 years from now, when I'm not around and none of you are around, and we had the opportunity to help these people, to help these contractors, to help these businesses, and the poverty level is now up to 6%. And the migration of our taxpayers are increasing because crime is increasing, we're going to be disgraced in saying that we had opportunity to do something, and we didn't. And the result of that is the same thing that is happening up in the MLK area where we have situations to where they are living akin to third world countries. When you have opportunities, you have to take advantage of those opportunities. We can't pass the buck on some things. We see the problems, we see the issues, and we just can't ignore it. We can't keep our head in the sand and pretend it ain't real, it ain't there. 49% poverty is real. The crime statistics for this first six months of this year are real. It's going to take progressive leadership to get us through this, and I want to be a part of progressive leadership. And we have to look out for those that are least, the least of our citizens. And we have to do it in a certain way without anybody saying that they're taking away from my table. We would never live in a peaceful community with this disparity, with this disparity in income and wealth, with the house living high on the hole, and the health knights living from paycheck to paycheck. Lynn said it best. She hate, think about what would happen, what would be happening in five years if we don't do something to make this better. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I want to respond about that project. I don't have the data today, but I can say that this administration has pushed significantly hard to involve all minority and fair share clients. And on this project, I'm not sure if there were minorities, and about his organization, I'm not sure about them. But I can say that over the past two years, since I've been in office, we have actually done more than $40 million in contracting with minority and small businesses. Every project, you know, there's opportunity, and of course, we offer those opportunities to everybody. We push the envelope, but we can't break the law. When projects are put up for bid, we have to follow the bid law. We encourage all of our contractors to, and we give them a list of all of the, you know, clients who certify, be they any minority, any small business, any woman-owned business that meet that criteria, and also that have the certification and the licensure. So I just want to go on record saying that we have been pushing the envelope, and we have the data to show it. This project, I'm not sure if there were even anybody who bid it on the project. You know, we have to have people to bid for us to offer that opportunity, but I too understand the plight of this community. I came from poverty, so I advocate for those that are less fortunate, and we're doing it. And so, you know, I have a report to show, and I'll be glad to share that with our publics, I plan to anyway, but I did want that to go on record. Every project that we offer in this city, we offer that opportunity. Sometimes we have people to bid, sometimes we don't, because sometimes they don't qualify. There are some barriers, and we're trying to help them overcome those barriers. We're working with LED at state level to help people overcome those barriers. But we're doing all that we can, and we're going to do that, but we're going to do it within the bounds of the law. So I needed to say that. Thank you.
Mayor, may I ask you?
Sure.
An operational question?
Yes.
Before you became mayor, do you know, maybe Jeff or some of them know, was it practice in the administration that all contracts were, came through the mayor's office? I mean, did the mayor actually look at those? Do you know?
Let's make sure that we're clear on the difference between an A&E contract and a construction contract.
Construction contract, absolutely.
One has latitude, one does not. And that's state law, very clear.
Construction contract.
Lowest bid gets the job. Lowest bid that's qualified.
So that's not me. I certainly get the intent, but I'm not here to defend one side of this discussion or the other. But I mean, on a construction contract, there's really not rationale for the executive of the city of Shreveport to be involved any more than what the law provides.
Right.
And then, you know, if we got an issue there, then we need to, you know, talk to our delegation and try to get them to change some of the laws at the state level. We got to keep this in a factual discussion and not be accusatory about stuff that some people may not... people may not have heard.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, let me respond just briefly. There's a whole cliche that says you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make it drink. My granddaddy had news, and he profoundedly showed me that that wasn't true. You can make a horse drink if you lead him to water. There is a way that we can fashion how we do business that will appeal to minority contractors where they can participate. For instance, in nineteen eighty-eight, no, let me be clear now. When the bond proposal passed to construct the hotel and convention center, in regard to the convention center, Walton Construction, prior to engaging in the contract with the city for that project, claimed that he identified areas where twenty-two percent of that work could be done by minorities. The question came up, we had the fair share program in place. The question came up, can the city actually, can the city actually hold him to that through our fair share program? And the answer was no. The fair share program is a goal with incentive to do that. But Walton said something. He said, listen, I will put it in the contract. I would put it in the contract, that twenty-two percent of this work would go to minorities. Now, the difference in that arrangement is that if it's in the contract, then the contractor, the prime contractor is now responsible to uphold this contract. It's not a big doors anymore. If you say you're going to do this, you do that. And the reason and the way my granddaddy told me that you can make a horse drink if you're taking water is that you change his appetite. You create in him a salty diet, that you will give him salt, give him salt, and when you take him down to the river, he would drink some water. We create the climate. We can manufacture improving on how we do business with our minority contractors. If there's a will, there's a way. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, do you have anybody who wants to speak?
Yes, sir. I have Mr. Bill Weiner, who would like to give a property standards report.
This is very timely, because what I'm going to speak about relates to support what Willie has just told us. The, oh, my name, Bill Weiner, seven eleven oh six. It's been, I discovered a problem in the property standards report, that it doesn't address what is called demolition by neglect, which is part of the National Register, National Trust for Historic Preservation, and other organizations like that. In Shreveport, the old Galilee Baptist Church property and building have been recognized nationally to be preserved. Previous city councils have endeavored to protect this part of our local history by council action, but the administrations have ignored taking action that have been directed by the council reports and pleas. During this administration, in twenty oh six, a survey and report was made to determine what must be done. The mayor has completely ignored this report, and the building continues to deteriorate. If you drive a car by the Galilee, you will see a hole in the roof and missing shingles. Records at the council office will give you a history of why it is the obligation of the city to protect this historic building. I request that the council immediately direct the mayor to develop a plan to address this great negligence by the city of Shreveport and to submit an action plan to the council at the next meeting for consideration. Previous plans have been submitted, approved, but no action was ever taken. As some of you might wonder why this building is important to our history, I suggest that you visit YouTube Martin Luther King, the speech at Galilee given August fourteenth, nineteen fifty-eight. Think about Galilee in Shreveport and compare it to Independence Hall in Philadelphia. At Independence Hall, there was a beginning of freedom for white males. Later, freedom was granted to others. At Galilee, the road to get equal justice under the Constitution in Shreveport was taught and some progress was made. You can imagine the owners of Independence Hall, our federal government ignoring, maintaining the building, or not patching the roof for that case. Excuse me, can you imagine that? Why can't our city protect the place where Martin Luther King spoke at least two times and civic actions were made to integrate us in a dignified way? Let me summarize. One, Martin Luther King spoke there two or more times. Two, classes were held in the basement to teach black children how to peacefully integrate into the schools and become outstanding citizens. Three, classes were held in the basement to develop a non-aggressive way to integrate the lunch counters in places like H.L. Green and Woolworth's. What did they do? A church member with their arms folded stood behind a person, a white person at the counter and left when they did. It was so effective that the stores got the message and removed the whites-only signs. Other places in our town...
Mr. Weiner, your time expired.
I've got just a little...
I'll tell you what, no, you went over a while. Let me tell you what I do. I will get with the...
You can allow me to have more time.
I will get with the property standards and see what they meet with you on your issues that you have.
I just have my own conclusion, if I can. You can, under your rules...
Could I move for one more minute?
Under your rules, if you can allow me.
Go, go. Is that fine, Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Number four, as you are aware, there were barriers imposed to inhibit colored from being able to register to vote. At Galilee in the basement, classes were held to address the problems that might be encountered. Now, I hope that this council appreciates the role that Galilee played in bringing the constitutional civil liberties to all of Shreveport citizens. As this is not over, we must protect and continue to remember what happened at Galilee and move forward. Please demand that the mayor write an action plan for council and a public discussion to be considered at the next council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Can I respond to some of that, just real briefly? I'd like to say, certainly, Mr. Weiner, I don't think there's any, you know, debating the significance of what occurred in that building. I think that, I don't think we need to spend a lot of time debating that. It's very much significant. I think that's something that everybody can agree on. However, the building was scheduled for demolition in nineteen ninety-four, and it was, the city council at that time agreed to take possession of it for six months while private sector worked on finding funding. They said six months, it's now been twenty-three years, and, you know, so it is a challenge, and we do need some partners on this. We need some other people to come to the table to partner on this. I know that there are some great organizations who have worked towards it. I know that there are some people who have interest in it. I would love to see it saved. It is a very important part of our history, but it is not something that the city can take full accountability for. We didn't let it get in that condition. It was given to us at a state where it was ready for demolition.
No, absolutely not.
I just read the resolution. Now, granted, I was in middle school in nineteen ninety-four, so, I mean, I don't know firsthand. But, you know, I do know that...
The city has not maintained the building or taken care of it. I was at these meetings where council said, take care of the building. It wasn't just to remodel it, it was to maintain the watertight integrity. Reports have been done. There was information given to the administration on how to get some federal funding. Alexandria got it, and it was even a private building. The city didn't act. I can furnish you with more records of what the council did and what the administration has not done. It has been a deliberate attempt to make that building need to be demolished, and there's nothing in our standards and codes that addresses demolition by neglect. The city's been demolishing it by not patching the holes in the roof and not following the recommendation of reports that they paid for.
The councilman is correct, Mr. Weiner, in the fact that in nineteen ninety-four, there was a swap. There was a swap between the city and Galilee Baptist Church.
Correct.
Yes, so the building, there was a committee that was formed to refurbish, renovate that building. It was already in deplorable condition, and that committee was charged with to go and get public funding to assist in this project. It wasn't secured. The roof done fell in, termites has destroyed most of the walls, and the flooring is horrible. Matter of fact, I visited the building just last month, and the furthest I could get is to the steps.
You're absolutely right on the condition of the building, but it was not that way when the city got it.
No, but my point is simply that, again, I'm a civil rights child, and I took pride in that building. But now, there's a documentary that's going to be shown tomorrow night over at the Presbyterian Church, Beyond Galilee. Mr. Weiner, we are beyond, beyond Galilee. We are in a situation now where looking at a documentary or talking about a Galilee building that I don't think is even restorable candidate for restoring.
Are you an architect?
No, 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 Mr. Weiner, money could do anything, okay? Listen, with twenty mega dollars, we can make Galilee look like it was when it was built.
And you mentioned this committee back then. I've never heard of that committee.
Well, it's real.
Who was on it? What was the name of it?
Ernestine Coben was one of the chairs. Ernestine Coben, I'll give you her number, you call us.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can we just move on? I'm not really sure this is really best use of...
Well, maybe not, maybe not. What I mean, but the financing of this...
So you're not going to do the research and address this? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying it's going to take finances to get this done, and you help us with the financing, we'll get it done.
Why don't you find out what's wrong, what can be done, and stabilize it?
Mr. Weiner, your time expired. I'm sorry, the time is expired. But why you standing up?
Kent Crap, one fifty-seven Archer Avenue, seven eleven oh five. A week ago, I was just doing my thing and my costume with Arestations, and that was always an honor to go to the nursing homes and talk to the old folks and go to different places in Cypressport and the riverfront. And I want to invite people tonight to hear Spa Director Shelley Regal. Always liked to anagram her name and drank a large Regal Lager for Regal. But she's going to talk about Spa at six o'clock at Broadmoor Presbyterian Church for the Broadmoor Neighborhood Meeting. And I got some good news from the contractor today. They hope to open East Kings evident Archer and East Kings Highway tomorrow. And coming here today, it was so wonderful to see seven lanes between the Chase Bank and the CVS, three each direction and a center lane. So now the center crash lane is not the fifth lane, it's the seventh lane, but it's a wonderful project. By the way, this project was first proposed in nineteen seventy-eight, and all of a sudden, you know, thirty-nine years later, we're getting it done. You see how things move, gentlemen, slowly, especially when it's DOTD. Thank you.
Next we have with Linda Scott.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Chairman of City Council, and members of the council. I'm Linda Scott. I reside at four forty-six Woodrow Street here in the city, seven eleven zero eight, which is District B for my city council. I'm here today because when I arrived home yesterday about eight o'clock PM from attending three meetings here in the city, to my surprise, I tried to take care of my personal needs in my bathroom. I tried to wash my hands. I had no water. This was about eight o'clock last night. We hadn't had water in my block till ten this morning. I didn't have water to wash my dishes. I didn't have running water to bathe, to flush, to commode. I have people live on my street. There is a baby, under four months old, that lives in my block. There is a gentleman live on my street whose wife is deceased, and he's alone, and I know you all probably know him, I won't call his name, but he's right in his nineties. We were surprised to find out that we would be without water over twelve hours, no notification. Of course, they said there was a main to break, a water break, but no one came around to tell us what was going on. I didn't know what happened. About nine o'clock, I called the water department, talked to a lady who said that there had been an emergency situation. They were working on it, and as soon as they got it fixed, we would have service. So I waited. Twelve o'clock, going to take a bath, no water. Got up at three this morning, no water. I left home at seven this morning to check the neighborhood on Fifty-Eighth Street, on Linwood, on St. Vincent. Nobody working on anything in the area. And this has happened several times, maybe not a break, but they're working. I understand about the consent decree and all that we're under, and we're on the Cedar Grove Basin Line and all like that. We have hosted meetings with clean water and different people from the departments to come and speak to the neighborhood, but they have continuously turned that water off without a notification, telling us it's going to be off. If you need to get water, you have thirty minutes, or it's going to be off an hour, or we're working tomorrow. I brought greens on March the nineteenth to participate with the greens on the red over in Highland. Picking the greens, getting ready to turn the water on on a Sunday, no water. No one had come around to tell us we weren't going to have water. This needs to stop. This needs to stop. We're not going to put up with this. Family business needing services, being citizens, productively participating in the city of Shreveport, and we can't get any better service than this. And it's just terrible. I know, they don't tell us, you need to boil the water when you turn it on, or you need to let the water run. We don't know what to do. We don't know what to do. So I want you all to know, all of you, and, Madam Mayor, we're not going to put up with it. I told people, don't go to Channel Three, don't go to Channel Twelve, let's wait. I called, thanks to Councilman Everson. Jeff and I are on first-name basis. I knew him when he worked for Mary Landry, before he ever got a job down here and ran for anything. He did return my calls. I've called Mr. Norman, I've called the water department, I called the mayor's office this morning, first thing around eight. Nobody called back. The only call I got was from the councilman, and I have the names of the person I spoke in your office and everyone's office. I called last night. The people are telling me, the supervisor, Mr. Jerry Williams, I think, with the water department, they came out, but they got there about nine thirty. Now, consider, you at home, you've got young children, you have a baby, and you can't get water? The neighborhood we live in, we can't really afford to be stocking up on bottled water, but it seems like now we're going to have to, because the city is too irresponsible with the water department. At my next neighborhood meeting next Tuesday, we already invited the water and sewage department, purification, to come. We participate with the city projects. Most of you all know me and have known me for a long time, but we're not going to tolerate. Thank you for your listening and time, but please try to do better with notifications.
And if I, if I could respond, Ms. Count, Mr. Chairman, I want to apologize to Ms. Scott. I have been in meetings out of the building all morning, did not get your call, and don't know if someone, usually the people in my office are really good about getting to the right people to help you.
Okay.
The notification should have been given. There's no excuse. Today, before you leave, I'm going to get you to get with our director of water and sewer, because I need you to call her directly when something like that happens, but in the future, you will be getting notification. That has been done in most communities, and I don't know why it hasn't been done in yours, but I'm going to give you my direct email address.
Okay, I appreciate.
And you can call me or email me directly. I, I return calls every day, hundreds of them every week, and so I did not get your call.
Okay, well, I spoke to Mary at eight twenty-four AM this morning.
Well, I was there in a meeting, and I left there and went to the federal court meeting, and then I had to go and do a speech at North Market, so I have not been in my office, actually. But we're going to take care of that problem. There's no excuse, and you will not be given that kind of service anymore. You got that from my desk.
Okay, thank you.
All right? And before you leave today, I want you to get with Barbara Featherstone, who is our director. She is in the back. Where are you, Miss Featherstone? Because that is not how we treat our citizens, and that is not something that I support. So please get with her so that she, she can give you her direct number.
Okay.
So you can call her in the future if that should happen again. You will get your notifications.
Okay.
I apologize.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Scott, for coming down, but I do, I should compliment Director Featherstone as well, because that was, when I got the call, that's who I called, and, and Ms. Scott called me back shortly thereafter, and didn't say that they followed up very promptly at that point, so I don't know what occurred before that.
I don't either.
But certainly.
I'm not sitting in my office every day. I'm, I'm out.
Sure, totally understand, but I do want to say.
You can email me directly.
I do, I just thought it was worth mentioning that, you know, in, in however it developed, you know, once the call did get to me and a place to call to your staff, they did follow up very promptly, so we appreciate that.
All right.
And last but not least, we have Mr. Jake Flukas. Speaking on River View Hall at eighteen.
Jake Flukas, seven four one, Kangrich Place, the President District. I'm here to talk about a Fourth of July event. I had a chance to be with my granddaughter for the Fourth of July, taken to several parks they had around here, to Atticata Park, to Seipor, and we walked over to the Riverview Hall, and they had the little jumping thing in it, jump bouncer ball, and Ms. Sena, that's Ms. Sena, S.E.N.A., is my granddaughter. She liked jumping in and out, and one thing I had to teach her was how to stand in line and wait. She get to one place, and they say she was too young to get there, she was only three. So we went to another little place, and she got in and played. Another little girl got in one of the things, and the man said, no, you're too, you're too old. I asked how old she was, she said thirteen, he said, well, it's only allowed for twelve. And that little girl left out. So we walked around, Ms. Sena and I, went to the, where they had a Hummer, and she got in the Hummer and enjoyed it, and after she got out of the Hummer, we went to another table. They had a display there of automatic weapon. Now, I don't know who promoted this. You've got an event going on that going to have kids from three to twelve, and you're going to have a display of automatic weapon. We certainly don't need this in, in the city right now, showing kids automatic weapon. And I know that is good to promote, the air force base here, but do you have other occupation like medical, doctor, nurses, aircraft mechanic? We don't need every time they have a military personnel that you're going to bring automatic weapon there to display for the kids. I don't know who promoted it. I hope that the city will get into it and want that to happen again. Thank you.
Any final words? Do we pick some later, anybody?
No, thank you.
May we do that?